Hello, everyone, and welcome to the what is today Monday, July 25th, 2022. Meeting of the Berlin Select Board. We are continuing to meet by Zoom, but that lets you know that meetings, the Berlin Select Board are generally recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice, your image, and your telephone number may be recorded. It is seven o'clock. And so let's start with the approval of the minutes of July 11th. We're going to look at the 18th at our next meeting. So just July 11th tonight.
Okay, motion to approve July 11th. That's fine. I just had a question about the executive session reason number seven. Mary, can you fill me in? What? What was that? What's that about?
That's the that's the reason under the open meeting law to review executive session minutes behind closed doors.
It is?
Yes.
That is what Margaret uses.
Okay. I just remember being told by your Labor Council that the rule to go into executive session to approve executive session minutes is the same reason you went into it in the first place.
You have to cite one of the exemptions, and this is how Margaret.
That's how we've done it for a while. Seven was used for minutes.
Okay, I guess I didn't really notice before, but. I mean, either that or I guess you could just say we're going into executive session to approve executive session minutes.
Yes, you still have to cite the air, the exemption under the Mass General Law, though. So this is it. And it is saying it because in parentheses is approval of executive session minutes.
Okay. All right. So then I made the motion and pegged second, right?
No, that's the discussion. So we'll take a vote. Hawkins.
He five.
Stone.
Correspondence is there? Any correspondence June?
We've not seen any.
General public comments. There's a couple of people in the audience. We have, as we, as we wait to see if anyone raises hands, we have two hearings tonight. We had Brad, who's not in the audience. For seven o'clock.
Actually, we have a fire or we did have a fire at Solomon Pond. And he called me quickly to say that he was heading back to town. Try to call in if he could.
That's fine. I think, you know, helping taking care of. Emergencies is probably more pressing at the moment. Do you want to, since we have the next hearings at seven, 10, I'm certain. June, do you want to talk a little bit about the town administrative report?
I can do that. I do believe that our meeting at seven 10 is going to be moved hopefully to the eighth. Just an FYI and. Let's see. We did receive a resignation from Janet Campbell, who was on the planning board, which was the whole reason behind their appointment at seven 10. Was to find a replacement. And I would. Request if we could possibly maybe do a thank you letter to Janet for all of her years of service with the town. That might be nice to to send her a little something. Because she has done a number of things for different departments in the town.
For many, many years. Yes.
Yes. I also wanted to mention that if anybody was not tuning in, that on the 18th that we actually did interviews for the TA. We had done three final interviews with Jennifer Warren Demen and Kristen. Rumblin, is that how you say it? Rublin, Reuben, and then Courtney Friedland. And we wound up choosing and offering the position to Kristen Rubin. And I believe Chris has been working with her as far as contract negotiations. So hopefully with any luck, we will have a new TA shortly. I still don't see Fred. I was wondering, I don't know if this is the proper place to ask or not, with reviewing the the recommendations as far as to have Margaret come in and work as a contract. Vendors, I believe, the way that it was voted, we currently do not have any money in her line item expenses to pay for that. I didn't know if there was any way that you would be possibly willing to pay her. I don't know if you'd want to call it a contract person through payroll. But to have it so that she would actually bill us billable hours through the payroll system after her two weeks of being gone. So that way there we didn't have to do any type of a reserve fund transfer. So I just wanted to bring that up to you. I didn't know what the right procedure would be to do that. Where currently I think you would approve to do it as a vendor.
I think we should take your recommendation, June.
I would look at the recommendation of the town accountant. I think our intent is to have her work a few hours to finish off things that are already on her list, not as a TA. But she had some things she wanted to wrap up.
Mostly procurements. Yeah, and assistance with that, so.
I did actually, June, have a phone call or I called Splendor Pendercast today because he emailed me and asked me to call her. About the. Event that we had a couple of weeks ago. Yes. Where the police were there and whatnot. And she was one, she was wondering if she could give Margaret a call, text.
She actually, yeah, she did actually reach her. Margaret, because I did speak with Margaret today and she did acknowledge that she had spoken with her today.
Good, good.
Yeah. So I don't know, did you need, would you need to do an actual vote to pay Margaret as still from a line item?
You, you tell us.
I was gonna say, what, what, what do you think's the easiest to do? Because I, the dollar amount's not going to change. It's sort of what line to take it out of, correct?
Correct. And at this time, there is money available even without doing a contract yet with Kristen. Because it will be in the time that she isn't here. So I would recommend that we do it and continue to pay her out of payroll based on hours actually worked. And I think you had approved up to 16 hours or 15 hours.
A week?
I believe so.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yes, up to 16 hours a week as needed on procurement and priority matters that are needed. And it would still be at the $65 an hour.
Well, it sounds good.
I don't know if we need to take a vote on that.
I think it's advice and there's no questions. Under sort of TA report, because. Is there, there's probably not a better spot, are there? Open session things, Chris, to give us an update on how negotiations are going with the new TA? Do we have an estimated start date or anything along those lines?
She estimated, she is supposed to give her previous employer six weeks. So she estimated that it would be either September 12th or September 19th.
Okay.
Are those Mondays, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay, and. She was married in April, so that they are going on a honeymoon the last week in October. I don't know if there's.
I guess, well, let her go on her honeymoon.
We promise we won't text her.
The other stuff is sort of minor and it. Probably should be an executive session.
That's fine. That's fine. Yeah, but you're continuing to have conversations and it's generally going.
Yeah.
Well.
Going well. She, I believe she's going to accept the salary that we talked about.
I only have one other thing, and that was the. That we did have an elevator issue in the building. I do believe Fred is going to double check on it in the morning. That we should be all set. They did take down the sign, so I'm assuming everything is good to go. And so that is back in business. We are still dealing with the air conditioning unit at the town offices. The office didn't go over 80 degrees today, so I was very happy with that. Fred actually called in some new people that he just recently made contact with to come in and take a look at the building and they switched around a few things. So we're going to see how that does overnight. And see what tomorrow brings on that, because the normal company has not returned his phone calls from last week, so. And Fred said that he should be signing in shortly. Within the next few minutes. So that's pretty much all I have.
Why don't we? Deal with the planning board issue and then we can get on to whether or not people have your questions while we wait for you, while we wait for Fred. So June, you said that we were looking at postponing this until the next meeting?
We are. They had a little problem as far as posting the meeting in time. And when they did post, it was after, it was like at nine 40 or something like that. So. At this time, I had requested if we could postpone it until the next meeting, if they could schedule a meeting at the same time, because I did look it up and you both have to be there to vote on it. It isn't something you could vote on and then they could vote on, but.
Tom has raised his hand in the audience. You're still muted.
I think he's coming forward. There he is.
Hi. How are you? So actually, June answered the, what I was going to ask in the last three seconds that before I had. There's no other way. I mean, I, I know in the past, there've been a vote and a vote. So and we're meeting tomorrow night and I was just hoping to get this done, but if we can't, then we'll have to wait till August.
Yeah, when I had read the, the chapter in the section, it looked like it was a matter of that it had to be done in a joint meeting.
Joint session? Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be in two weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. And then. Peg, Chris, do you have questions for June before we invite Fred forward?
Ms. June, it's not. Critical on fire, need your attention, just one of those things. Did you find out anything from the town of Middleborough in regard to their earthwork? Declaration, proclamation, whatever it was, so that we avoid the Attorney General?
I did not, no.
Put it down the bottom of your list. If you stumble across it, great.
I might send you an email on that, because I don't really know a lot about that, so I will send you an email just to catch up.
Okay.
Chris, do you have anything?
I'm sorry. No, no, I'm good.
Okay. So let's. Let's chat with Fred. Hey, Fred.
How are you guys?
Doing well.
All right, Tom. First off, let me apologize for the heat down there at the public safety bond for those of you that are working in it. They're, they're troubleshooting it. Hopefully, hopefully it'd just be another day, maybe. So tonight's thing, we're just going to talk a little bit about the small bridge grant. I don't know if, if Margaret had forwarded the email out to everybody. July 13th, I got a letter from her that we were approved for phase one of that grant. Of the, of the grant, it's. The maximum award is $100,000. I don't know yet how much we've been given for it. Our cost so far for phase one is 104, 235. And we submitted that back on March 31st, so it's been a while. I've been sweating it out. But just to give you a little background on the grant itself. So that started out originally back in 2016 through a transportation bond. And there were five awards that were set off. Where those had been paid and it came out really well. They reauthorized it in 2021, which enabled us to start getting our feed in with. Phase two, I don't believe reading through everything. I don't think we can actually put in for it until our whole design is done, submitted and approved. To still hopefully get a fall of 2023 construction time in. And the maximum amount awarded for that is 500. Without the 15% contingency that the HB has put into it. If we're allotted the whole amount, we shouldn't have to pay much of anything because their total construction cost so far would be 49, 126. So hopefully we, we shouldn't have to front much, if anything, out of chapter 90 money. Make this happen.
I just want to like add really quickly that congratulations, Fred, on your first grant.
Yes, no, it wasn't me. I just submitted it. It was.
You did some of the work, so good job.
Yes. So I'm just glad it came through. It came on a very good day. So that was good. But I think that was all I had for right now. I'm still working on the. RDA for our chapter 90 project. It started out being a notice of intent, which we're hoping we can just get by with the determination of applicable ability. For the area around the water that we have to do the work at. So once that's done, and I don't know if Margaret's going to have the time to finish the IFBs. The way they're written now, I think we could actually put an ad in the paper and go with them. My questions were just. About like the contract years. There was nothing to change wording or anything like that. I just need a more or less clarification on them. So once we have those in place, then I think we can advertise for the contract and get that work on the way. So I'm still hopeful for this year of actually getting some road work done. If everything goes right.
Good.
Fred, the, the bridge we're talking about is at the South Street Bridge?
Yes, it is. It's the one just after you start going down the hill from the municipal center. Once you round the corner, it's the second one right there.
The one kind of near the Alpaca Farm?
Just down from that, because there's one, one crossing before it. That's more or less a corrugated half moon. It's the one right out there. Actually, you can't miss it. It's one that now has the pothole. The patch mark.
Okay.
And it actually comes at the right time. I think if, if we had let this slip through another year, I think the state probably would have been closing the breakdown. So I'm hoping that it'll last until we can get it done.
Yeah.
Just so it doesn't, it's bad if we have to close it.
So I had, I had a question also from a. Well, a committee member. And she was asking me about. What, what kind of work you had to do that you had to have a hearing?
Oh, just recently?
Yeah, is it Highland Street or something?
Yeah, it's actually, there's three, there's three spots on Highland Street and there was two on Randall Road. Because the road work would be within the 100 foot buffer of the water up there.
Okay.
Even though the streams have pretty much dried up, we still have a pond by the horse farm, Clover Hill. That it's, it still contains water. So originally, they thought I was going to have to have a hearing and do the whole certified of butters and have them all come in. Maddie reviewed my NOI that I sent her, and she thinks that just because of the scope of work, it doesn't require something that, that big. So it was brought from, I think, 17 pages down to three.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, but I, it was a good experience though, having to fill the NOI out. This is, this is so much on it. It's, it's incredible. Even the RDA, there's, there's things on here I have questions about.
Okay. I will let this friend of mine know.
Okay, but as it stands now, there shouldn't have to be a hearing. We shouldn't have to notify butters.
Okay, good.
And I don't know more. Actually, I, I think they're still going to keep my date in August on, I believe it's the 17th, the Wednesday.
Okay.
To, to hear that part.
Any questions?
Oh, I was at the, I watched the playback with Fred, so it's all good.
You must have a question. You always have questions.
I know.
Don't let me down. Come on.
You want a question? I gave you a question.
She's gonna steal one of mine.
But I know the answer to it. Again, kind of like June, nothing's on fire. Don't wait, or you can wait. No biggie. Did you ever hear back from the company for the cost on the installation for the doors?
Um, I have not yet.
That's my question.
Larry Crosman. Well, he's, he's actually working on two things. So I had him look at the doors that day. Start off, and then I brought him to the transfer station to look at the work that's got to be done down there to prevent the retaining walls from coming in.
I saw that you filled in the hole by the first container when you pull in that the board is no longer there, that it's all filled in.
Yes. Well, that'll still be probably ongoing until we can actually come up with a solution. Because the idea was, we ran it by Larry, would be to put a concrete foundation wall in place of the stone wall and still put drainage behind it. The cost for that, I think, will be outrageous because it would have to be an engineered wall. So the other route we're going to look into also is putting the concrete stack on blocks. They're like the big, they weigh like a ton of piece. And in the same thing, we're going to put them in place of the rock wall, so we don't have to lose any. Space down there and the compactor that's, that the newer compactor. Will only have to be moved temporarily until we can get the work done and then just put it right back in place. I think the hardest thing we're going to deal with is supporting the roof. Because both supports on that container land on the wall and then the other one lands behind the wall. But we'll adapt and overcome.
That's my only question, Fred. See, I told you could have waited. It wasn't like critical on fire. You're all good.
But at least now we're a step forward, so we at least have a guy looking. And he's going to get back to us when he can.
You know what? Whenever you're ready, Fred, let me know and, and happy to, you know, go with you or go on your behalf to. Capital planning and things like that. So, you know, I know that you're super duper busy and if there's anything that I can do to take the load off that and do all the legwork behind it. Toss it to me. I'm happy to, happy to help.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And then Fred, the, the cleanups we did in the buildings and the dumpsters that we had. Is, is that all sort of done at this point from your end?
No, the only things we've actually moved, which I haven't sent the pictures to June yet, we cleaned out the upstairs second floor room in the back corner for that Monday night. So when they had the TA interviews. A mess. That's the only stuff we cleaned out because I haven't gotten a list that said, you know, what, what was trash, what was not. The only things I do know that are junk are the couches that are up the old fire station. That's the only thing. That's why we still have that big roll off.
And then the old highway barn, we, did a lot of stuff come out of that? Is that a mostly empty thing at this point?
Yep, actually, the only stuff that's in there really from us is, there's a backhoe bucket, a roller trailer, and all the wood that we just picked up for the gazebo facelift. That's all we have. And then the community, the council on aging that.
Yeah.
And then that one's empty.
I think that's all I had. I thanks, thanks for coming. Nice to see you again.
Oh, no problem. I'm always willing to come in.
Yeah. So happy to hear about the, the bridge improvements.
Yes, hopefully that'll be going forward.
Yep.
Soon.
Scott, before Fred goes, there's an issue that I was going to bring up with Pon Pon that came up at the last meeting. It directly involves Fred. I don't know if you want me to bring it up now or wait so that we don't make Mr. Fred wait till the end of the meeting.
I'm, I'm fine with you bringing it up now.
So. Concomit has suggested another earth thing cleanup in. October timeframe. I thought Margaret had said that any work that is requested from another department needs to come through the TA, that departments cannot just go to other departments to say, can you come do my work? Because if they do another cleanup, then that means overtime for Fred and the rest of the highway guys. So it's. Who's going to pay for that? Whose budget is it coming out of? I don't think it's fair for Fred to foot that bill as an unexpected expense. And again, we need to start steering these committees instead of going directly to Fred, who has a heart of gold. And of course, we'll say, yes, absolutely, whatever you need. Kind of puts him in a bind because it puts him on the spot. It would just be like if I said to Fred, like right now, hey, can you come up and trim the blah, blah, blah? You'd say yes, you know, because that's just the kind of guy that you are. So what are we going to do to like rein that in of departments circumnavigating, you know, the TA, even though we have TA two right there, there she is right there, my upper left. To stop that. Do we come up with a form? Do we wait until the new TA is in place? I just don't think it's fair to go to other departments to say, hey, can you? And if they want to pay for it, great. But I don't think that it's fair for Fred to fork overtime and a half on a Saturday for a cleanup when the process is, you come to the TA, you come to the board. Or, you know, come to the TA, the TA asks for that. So wanted to ask about that tonight.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like there is a process. They should go to the TA and Fred should have the, say, I, you know, I get my orders from the, the TA. We have, that's the structure we have for the government, town government.
So whose budget is that going to come out of? Somebody's going to pay for overtime for highway for however long that they go around picking up yellow bags on a Saturday.
What, what, what about, does anybody else from Concom have a pickup truck? Can they pick them up?
Don't know, didn't ask. It was just Fred happened to be there and the question was, hey, we want to do an October cleanup. We've already talked to Eric. Eric said that, you know, he'd give police on, you know, 62 so that you don't get run down by the drivers and, oh, Fred's there. Oh, by the way. You'll help pick up the trash too, won't you?
With the same request of police, that who's paying for that overtime with the details and, and other stuff. And so sort of why we have a, generally have a TA to coordinate some of these sort of things. And so it could be that there's just not enough. Because we happen to be between TAs, there won't be enough time to sort of enter how this gets budgeted. And planned for, for this fall. Maybe we should schedule, you know, ComCom to come to select board and they need the, they want money out and select the town budget and not their budget, then. We should help work with them to figure out where it might come from.
Can, can Peg just tell Concom what the process is? They need to go to the TA.
Right, as you say, the process is go to the TA. The TA helps decide the competing priorities between the departments because that's sort of what we have the TA for. And it's not going to happen much in July or even early August, because TA two has, is doing other things. And so we are a little full at the moment. It's for a fall event. I. It could be difficult to pull off this year. So I, you might want to set, we could set an expectation on that.
Okay, yeah. And, and I mean, I'll talk to them, but I think inviting them to is a good thing because there was also a request and Fred did an awesome job and. You know, took care of it and spun it and he's smiling because he knows what it was, that there was a request to hire highway people and their equipment on a weekend to do some work on Poncom fields. Again, needs to go to the TA. There's a budget, you know, who's going to pay? What happens if a highway guy gets hurt doing that? Dear God, no, because there's only two that are licensed and we can't afford and either of them to go down in any capacity. What happens? You know, they hit something and the machine breaks. So, you know, Fred was kind enough to give advice. He did an awesome job on that. But again, I think we need to stop doing this of going around the people that we need and just asking.
And that takes everyone to do that. It's that department head should feel free to say, I get the prioritization from this, from the town administrator, and you should go to the town administrator. I know that when I have requests of town department heads, I not only always CC the town administrator, but I tend to always do a disclaimer that says, you know, I am asking as an individual, this is not an action of the select board, even though I happen to sit on the select board, you should take this, whatever prioritization, individual request, an individual town member gets, or something along those lines.
Are you okay with, with answering to the group if they come and ask you?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sure we could figure out something. Maybe we do need to work up some sort of a form or just maybe a written policy that we can send out just to remind people, because I have to say that. As much as Fred is really good about it, he really doesn't have a ton of extra. Time or money right now, the way that he proposes the budget. So I think that's something else that we would need to really talk about in general. With some of the departments is it's one thing if it's a once a year thing and it's an hour here or there, but if we're going to actually plan on doing certain things over an extended period. If we're going to actually plan on doing certain things over an extended period of time on a regular basis, I think we really do need to. To relook at that. So at least if nothing else, Fred could at least. Know this ahead of time to be able to budget properly. Um, not that he's not doing it right now, that, that's not what I meant, but to actually be able to say, okay, well, if we're going to have a few extra. Projects in town, then I'm going to have to have extra money in the, on the budget for overtime or supplies or. Whatever, right now, gas.
Well, and that's what I was going to ask. Do you include gas in that? I mean, I don't know how much gas is going to cost from. Eight to four to drive around town and pick up bags, but you just say.
I don't know if it would be as easy to like charge departments because it doesn't matter which bucket per se, it comes out, it still comes out of town funds and we just have to. Make sure we're budgeting properly, that's all.
Okay, all right. I'll request an appointment with Fun Combat their next meeting to remind them of the, remind them of the process.
Yes, okay, that's what I was going to say because I feel really. Um, like. You know, now we're between TAs, sort of, not really, but. You know what I mean? And we don't want to circumvent. The new TA to say, well, we'll just have them come to our meeting and we'll figure it out. We should let, you know. The TA figured it out.
Agreed, but if you look at the timing, so if she isn't going to be around until the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth. I think they're planning sometime in October for this. It doesn't really give a lot of time for planning.
Have them go to June, yeah.
And, and it could be that it's just because it were between TAs and other stuff going on and because there wasn't money budgeted, it's just not something that can be done this year.
Maybe they'll figure out how to do it on their own.
Yep, all right. I will ponder. Thank you, Mr. Fred. Appreciate the advice that you gave them on their. Request for hiring you on a weekend.
No, you're welcome. Um, if it does become a problem and, um. Uh, we don't have to pick the bags up. If they have it on a Saturday, they can sit Saturday and Sunday. Uh, no one's going to pick them up. Um, we can.
Five dollar bags.
I get five dollars for them.
So they can, uh, do that, the project. Um, we could try to work around the overtime thing, uh, and just do it, you know, we could plan to do it on a Monday morning, drive around a couple hours, pick them up. If it comes down.
Well, we'll let you figure that out.
Thank you, Mr. Fred.
Uh, let's see, we sort of already done the town ministry reports. Let's jump into old business, which is our friend ARPA funding. I just. Listed these as the ones that I thought were sort of spots that were ready for votes or that might have been ready for votes or action. I actually don't think any of them really are this by Peg. You have nothing in eighteen seventy town hall. The real estate RFQ in so respects is waiting for Margaret to come back, I believe. Legion Hall, there's nothing. Uh, there's not a quote or anything to do that yet. Uh, that she says he's still waiting on some radio stuff and we just talked about doors, correct?
Yeah, on the eighteen seventies septic, I can tell you, I've been chatting with Evan and, um. He really doesn't have time until fall, maybe winter. So I told him that I would just put a reminder on my calendar for late fall, early winter. He's done some preliminary information, but to the extent that we need him involved, he just can't devote the time right now, which is fine. Uh, you know, eighteen seventy, the, the, the issue has been going on for years. I don't think another couple months. Anything's going to like break and catch on fire, so we're good.
Uh, so new business then, uh, the twenty twenty-two license for premier amusements during businesses, player one amusements group. June, is that actually ready for vote? I thought it's like emails today that implied that.
No, they haven't, they haven't paid yet. Uh, they, they should probably be moved another meeting.
Right, because they've both not paid and there's a few other things outstanding. So I, I think we're just going to pass over that and move on to the next item. Um, uh, we need to appoint a new temporary ADA administrator. Um, I think this, the, the reason for this, if I understand it is. Uh, Peg might be looking at helping apply for some more ADA grants and requires the sign off. Of the ADA administrator, which is the town administrator, which is currently in between. Um, uh, I don't, does anyone have like what other duties are expecting of a temporary ADA administrator besides? Oh, sign, uh, the, a grant request with Peg?
It's, it's nothing and they don't actually sign. They, the grant says, who's your ADA, the, uh, who's your ADA coordinator? And I go. And there is, which I can dig up from Margaret, there was some. Uh, memorandum, some license, some certificate, I'll go find it, but that's really the extent. TA doesn't. Do anything with that. I just, I need a name. To put in.
Full name or could you put in town administrator?
No, off name. Off name, yep.
So, um, i- in the case of a temporary. Uh, ADA. Administrator. Can it be, can it be?
Peg signed the grant and so it's like the two people on the same one. I, I am. Uh. Uh, you know, could it? I, I've not talked to other people about this, but. You know, if it really is a name for a grant and that by the time we get the grant, we can say, hey, when we wrote the grant, there was. You know, so and so, but now we have a town administrator, so it's now this person.
Yeah, hold please, hold please, interrupting, sharing, 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 share screen, share screen.
Years ago, we used to have an ADA committee. And the ADA committee was Barry Edgar and I think it was BZ Benson. Um, I mean, I'm sure maybe one of those would volunteer. They know a lot about ADA.
The, the Z now lives in Alaska, so.
Honestly, and they don't need to know anything about be, about ADA, Chris. It's just. If you look at the screen, uh, we appoint. Somebody and then I take this, I put it in PDF and this is all I need. So I just need a. A name. I don't need one, obviously, today, you know, we can ponder, but this is all I need. Um, for an ADA coordinator.
For, for my gut, the, the three possibilities, especially since it is, there is not. I'm assuming there's not a lot of work involved and probably almost no work involved. Uh, is, is that either me as chair of the select board or June as acting TA. Or Mary as the, uh, staff to the select board. Um, I think any one of those three could probably would, would likely do for this purpose.
What about Victoria?
I, I wouldn't have. Problem because again, I don't, I, I'm, I'm hoping that there's not a workload that goes with this.
No, there is not.
Just a signature, right?
Yeah, it's not even a signature. It's. We vote, we name, insert person name here. I take this letter and when I submit the ADA grant, I put in insert name here and I attach that letter. Done. That's all I need. So, but I didn't know with. Victoria, if she may have some information that may help us with the ADA grants. I don't know. I'm happy to reach out. To her. I, I don't want to burden her either, but.
Um, well, either that or, um, how, how much would you care to do the job, Scott? I would make that motion.
I, I, I have no problem doing it.
I'd like to ask Victoria first before we do it. She may have some insight on. How to write ADA grants for towns that are like super duper small and unfortunately, we don't get them because we're a super duper small.
Okay.
I, I am okay. Um. Uh, with us asking Victoria as well.
Then why don't you do that and then let Scott know if he needs to put it on an agenda?
You betcha.
Okay.
Hey, next agenda item. Is, uh, the approved the bicycles battling cancer special event application on the public right away.
All feedback was favorable.
Okay, good. So I'll make a motion to approve the bicycles battling cancer special event.
I'll second.
Uh, I don't think there's any discussions since I think it's a really cool thing. Uh, let's vote then Hawkins eye.
Kiffy.
Great, uh, let's see, approve the board signing the state primary warrant. Uh, which the state primary is Tuesday, September sixth, uh, and from seven AM to eight PM. I always think these are funny because like if, what if we didn't approve it? Can we, can we move the date of the state primary? No, we can't move the date of the state primary. But, but apparently we have to approve it. So, uh, is there a motion to approve the state primary warrant?
So moved.
Seconded.
Uh, let's take a vote, uh, Hawkins eye.
Kiffy.
Stone eye.
Uh, and then I believe they're at town offices waiting to be signed up. Wait a minute, two of us have already signed it and I think two is all is necessary. So those are ready to go to. Eloise, I believe. Uh, delegate scheduling of patrol officers and police chief for ease and coordination of constable for polling locations in all regular and special town. Regional, state and federal elections. Um, I think this also came from Eloise. Um, and I've lost my folder here.
It was Elo- Eloise's request.
And, and do we need to take a vote on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Delegate, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to. Delegate scheduling of patrol officers. To fleet or ease of coordination of constables for polling locations of all regular and special town, regional, state and federal elections.
Seconded.
How's that?
Sounds really good to me. Uh, let's take a vote Hawkins eye.
Kiffy.
Stone eye.
Uh, and then, uh.
Jim's doing this.
I would just like to, if we could possibly just add something in there to Eloise's for her to send a reminder to the police department when this is actually needed. Um, just to make sure that it's on their radar. At any time.
I, that sounds friendly to me. Does that sound friendly to you, Chris? To remind the, the.
Yeah, that sounds fine. Amendment.
Mary will make it look like that was part of the original amendment and we got to write the first time. Um, uh, Peg, Wustoff partnership with Berlin for, for Berlin days.
Absolutely. Um, so we all received a letter. Uh, from Adam Fuller, uh, and I'm reading off of his email, um, so if I'm not looking at your apologies. So, uh, Adam Fuller, he lives in Boylston, uh, lit, works with the Worcester Woo Sox. Um, as a marketing. Person and said that, uh, they've been reaching out to the Woo Sox have been reaching out to towns. Uh, about setting up days where we can come out to the area, show support, you know, try to hit the popular spots. We already know what those are. Uh, local shops, restaurants, handing out goodies and schedules. Um, I mean, I can tell you that I went to the Woo Sox lately. Look at this. I got my nice little hat. It also doubled as a nacho holder. And also double as a, doubles as a lovely hat when your hair is big. Um, and they have different, you know, like. Welcome town of Grafton, you know, welcome. So I'm just thinking that that would be a cool thing, just to have them come and talk to us and see. Um, their last game is, is in September, oh, September twenty-fifth. Is their last game. So, you know, see if there's a possibility, do something, but you know what? Why not? Um, you know, if he's willing to come out and have a chat, then why not have a chat?
So are, are you going to contact him?
You betcha. I'd be happy to.
I'm always nervous when, when government agencies become marketing arms for for-profit institutions. I get that. That baseball is a, in a national pastime. Um, uh, but what they're getting out of it is basically, you know, having us help them market their business to. Our population. Um, and if I sometimes think if we were going to market businesses to our population, we should market some of the. Incredible businesses we have here in the town already. Now, that said, there's no way I would stay. I, I don't feel so strongly enough that I would say we shouldn't do this or would. Vote against something like that, but, uh. Uh, I think it's something to at least be cautious about.
In his letter. Um, Peg, was he saying that he was going to do the marketing to the town of Berlin or? Is that something?
No, he said, my name is Adam Fuller. I'm a Boylston resident currently working with the Worcester Red Sox, uh, as a marketing intern over the last several weeks. We've been reaching out to towns and sending up days where we can come out to the area and show our support. When we visit these towns, we try to hit the popular spots, local shops, restaurants. As we are handing out little goodies and schedules, if you have any suggestions, um, I'd be happy to set up a meeting. With you and club president, Dr. Charles Steinberg. And that's all he wrote, so. I'd prefer to give him an opportunity to come and just say what they're, what they're all about. You know, why not?
So would that mean that he would come to a meeting?
I would think so. I mean, I, I, I just don't want him to show up at the jungle store, you know, I just don't want to show him at the transfer station or nineteen Carter. Um, but you know, give him an opportunity to come to us and, and see what he's doing and maybe. Maybe it's something that we'd like, maybe, you know, to some of Scott's point. We don't, you know, we narrow it, they want to do, we say you can do, but. There wasn't a lot of information, so why not? Hi, Mary.
You want to, she has a question?
No, we've done this before with the Potucket, no, not Potucket.
Yeah, they've.
Providence Bruins. Farm. And the Woo Sox have all, I thought they had already reached out to Margaret before too. So this, this has happened before with other. Teams. This isn't the first time.
Yeah, because I know at one point that the Woo Sox were interested in buying that land down by the rotary, but unfortunately, because of the conservation restriction. You know, could not, so.
Well, I'll, I'll respond to Mr. Fuller's email, um, and give them some of the dates of some upcoming meetings and see if one's good. Because their season is ending really soon, that doesn't mean that, I mean, I'm hoping they're still around next season and so it could be, we put things in place, you know, that can really help out for, for next season as well. Okay?
All right.
Uh, appointments.
A new, um, appointment request. Little bit late today and I apologize for that, um, but with the recommendations from Fred. I would like to recommend your conditional appointment for Christopher Ogilvy. Um, for a full-time position with the highway laborer driver.
Okay, you want me to make a motion?
Go for it.
Motion to appoint Christopher Ogilvy to the highway la- as to highway laborer driver.
Yes, any other discussion? No, uh, let's take a vote Hawkins eye.
Kiffy.
Stone eye.
Great. The last sort of open session item, well, before we get to boards, questions and comments, I gotta like put questions and comments and liaison updates and like bold yellow or something so I don't lose it. Anyway, uh, future, uh, meeting forums, whether or not, uh, the select board, we're going to continue this sort of Zoom forum. Uh, we're going to try to do us, our meetings live, uh, let's say for August and September. Uh, are, do we have the technology June to do it hybrid at this point?
Uh, not officially. I mean, we could do it, but not, uh, it would be more along the lines like we did, um, with the interviews. The TA interviews at this point right now.
Um, Peg, Chris, your commentary?
Well, I. I, I would just say that right now, the present. Code COVID variant. Um, is the most highly transmittable and. Um, I, I myself can't compromise my health right now. And I don't think we should compromise the health of others at this point, otherwise I think. The lieutenant governor probably would not have signed off on additional Zoom meetings for municipal government. And, and, and Scott. Why are you asking this?
I, I'm asking it mo- mostly because we, it, we, we had said.
Have a, a live meeting on the eleventh. Do you remember that date?
That would have been, and that would have been about the time because the last time we actually formally discussed this was, you know, we were going to do things through at least early July. And this is sort of why it's on the calendars.
Okay.
Is that, uh, uh, we hadn't formally and, and so it was up on a reminder of. Boy, we should go back and talk about it. June and I discussed whether it should just be her, just part of a TA update, but because I thought this might result in a. Vote or a serious discussion, I thought it was worthy at least just listing out, so it doesn't look like we're trying to skirt any sort of open meeting stuff, so. Um, Peg, your thoughts?
Uh, the only thing that I, that, uh, is important is that obviously when our new TA joins us at the end of September, I. I think. I don't know, to me, it's, it's, it would be nice. Uh, as a show of support that, you know, as we can, we meet in. Public, you know, with her, whether it's in the hearing room and we're all spread out all over the place. You know, for that, but I mean, other boards are meeting. Um, you know, in, in person, um, some boards continue. Um, some boards continue to meet virtually. So, uh, but I personally, I would prefer to meet, um, in person when the new TA arrives.
Well, that's September. I know that we have the, um, ability to use Zoom until March twenty-third of twenty-three.
Um, so what I will do is on, uh, our second meeting in August, I will put this back on the agenda for us to talk about again for the idea that, because we'll also know whether or not she's starting on the twelfth or the nineteenth.
No, it, yeah, it was the twelfth, the night.
Twenty-fifth.
Right. Um, so what meetings we might want to try, uh, to, to do it again, so, uh.
Set up too, so that we could do a combination.
Yeah.
And it, you know, you were the one that, um, was, uh, zooming in at the last meeting, Scott.
Yeah.
And you can probably, you probably know more of the shortfalls too. And I've asked this all along, that you get something in, i- i- in a, in process so that we could do both. And even parents, parents or, or residences can, um, log in instead of coming to meeting.
It, it takes some equipment that we probably don't have at this point. I think Jelax is looking at some of those things. Is that I could see when I did it, I could see the presenter, uh, and felt it was decent. Although obviously we could see the presenters didn't know and I, I couldn't give them advice of like, where do they look when they're answering my question? Where are they supposed to be looking to pretend they're sort of looking at me? Um, but I couldn't see, like, I could see Chris and Peg, I could see your hands. You know, um, and so on the.
It would be nice to be able to see, you know, each other. Like if, if one member is, uh, at home and the other two are not, then, you know, it'd be nice to be able to see your faces.
Right.
Rather than just, you know, the room.
Right.
I can also reach out to Brittany and Margaret and find out where they stand on the, um, procurement for, uh, getting it wired. So I can check with them also.
And I'm, I'm sure, you know, we, we don't know how Kristen feels about, um, the, the live meetings or the, uh, Zoom.
Yeah.
I think you have a coffee talk sort of, um, scheduled, I think. Is it in September?
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, the twenty-second, I think was, it was a Thursday meeting, so I'm assuming that would be a talk, uh, coffee talk. So that would also be something to think about too, at that point.
That'll be a great time to introduce her to the public.
It would.
Door to the wolves. Hi, it's your third day. Do a ten-minute presentation on everything going on in the town to, uh, people who have been here forty years.
It will be a test.
Test, right? Um, board questions, comments and liaison updates.
I have nothing right now.
All right. Uh, for energy, I sent a note to the team, introduced them to Tim. Uh, wasn't sure if that introduction was made, but just sent it. And then I provided the presentation that was done back in June, uh, when Beth and I'm horrible with names. The other lady who came to talk about solar, uh, so they have that. So hopefully they'll be posting a meeting sometime soon. Uh, rec, no meeting, con con, you heard most of it. Um, the one item that came up was that, uh, in their hydro seeding up at Highland and there was a problem with the hydro seeding. They were supposed to hydro seed to help stabilization. And well, they hydro seeded lawns. Uh, so I know that, uh, they're going to continue discussions on that. And June, you answered my question for earthworks. That takes care of my four.
Um, uh, historical is now meeting at least once, if not twice a week right now. Um, they're working on sort of two different things. They're putting some, uh, pieces together for the, uh, uh, Hearst House and a process that would, uh, get it, uh, potentially built on, on, uh, town land. And then, um, and, and donate it to the town on town land. And then they're on a separate track, they're meeting with, uh, an architect who did some work with nineteen Carter and eighteen seventy town hall uh, to help them put together sort of, uh, a master plan, put together, help them a little bit with an RF, key RF, 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 something or other to, uh, uh, to spend the, to get the architectural survey and stuff done so they can put themselves in a position to get to, to apply for the state granting in the, uh, in the spring. And although it sounds like spring is forever away, uh, when it comes to all the work they potentially have to do to, to get stuff in place for that, it's actually not. Um, I sat in on sort of the first meeting of that, uh, was it Tuesday from two to four or something like that? Uh, and it was, uh, uh, it was, it was a very productive meeting. Um, uh, it is only three people on historical, uh, commission and if they're meeting two or three times a week, uh, it is tough on the volunteers and it's also, you know, tough on even, uh, me who just sort of sits and tries to listen to them. But, uh, I think they're making us a pretty good progress. I think there's a pretty good energy there. Um, uh, Chris, uh, you feel there's stuff worthy of saying in an executive session, uh, about the TA contract negotiations?
Um, I could do that probably pretty quickly if he'd like.
I just, I just wanted to make sure there was a, a reason for it. And so, um, if there's not, are there, uh, just assuming there's not other boards, questions, comments, liaisons on updates, we've gotten to those. Like sometimes shortchange those. Um, and so the board, let's see, I gotta read this. The board will enter executive session pursuant to Matthews General Law, uh, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, reason number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel. Or to begin that collective bargaining sessions or contract visions with non-union personnel and the chair so declares. And the chair is declaring there's a need for executive session for TA contract negotiations. Um, I think we have to vote on that and so we'll vote Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
Stone Eye.
Hey, uh, is there a link for?
And we're going to come back and to regular. There's no one in the audience at this time.
Right. So we'll only come back to adjourn and we could turn off the recording and we'll watch the attendees.
Looks like nobody's here.
Right.
He's looking around.
Uh, thanks. We have adjourned from executive session. I believe the only remaining order of business is to actually adjourn the select board meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Uh, Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
Stone Eye.